Good evening. Today is Monday, August 20th, 2018, 6:00 PM in the Haverhill Room. This meeting may be recorded live. Ms. Hanges, would you please call and roll?
Yes, Mr. Igi.
Yeah.
Mr. Fabiano.
Yeah.
Ms. Powell. Here. Ms. Wood. Here. Mr. Vecchio.
President.
Mr. Perrin.
Here.
Mr. Kevin Bianco.
Here. President Vecchio, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance or serve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In due part, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment? All right, moving on to delegates and visitors. We have Mr. Nidi here with Regional Energy Manager. He's the Regional Energy Manager of, uh, will you want to come and speak?
Thank you very much for inviting me here today. So those of you who have been on the school committee for some time, since I came on board two and a half years ago, we had tried to do solar at the middle high school, right after it was constructed. And at that time, unfortunately, there was some changeover of the financier for the project. The new people who came on board, we weren't able to reach an agreement with the power purchase agreement. And then subsequently, number of regulatory changes of the solar incentive program have happened on the state level. And we're now in a position to look to move forward with doing the solar panels at the school. So I wanted to come here, provided information to all of you guys today on the solar project. And what we're looking to do is install those solar panels with our partner, Select. And I have Matt Shortsleeve here in the room with me from them. The project is going to be 200 KW, which is a nice sized system. It'll put out 234,000 kilowatt hours and just in lay terms, that comes to about 16% of the annual usage for the building currently. And then for the first year, it'll save us about $9,000 a year, and then a total of about $370,000 over the 20-year life of the contract. So we've gone through the power purchase agreement already. We've utilized our town attorney, KP Law, to review that contract. I know there, in the past, were concerns with voiding the warranty of the roof, since it's a new building, things like that. Select has agreed in the contract in writing that they will maintain the roof warranty. They're in contact with our roofer, and they will work directly alongside him during the installation process to ensure the warranty of the roof is not invalidated in any way. So we wanted to bring this information to you guys today. We're hoping that the committee will vote to approve putting the solar panels on the middle high school. It's a fantastic opportunity. It helps us towards our goals of becoming a carbon-free municipality by 2050 through the mayor's climate task force. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Why wouldn't we rent solar panels from a solar farm versus installing solar panels on the roof?
So we are already doing that, actually. So we, so we have an arrangement where we are purchasing solar power from a project in Haverhill. Currently, the high school is receiving some of that benefit. I'm sure Sue can speak a little bit more to what she's seen. It's had a rocky start because National Grid was not incentivizing the town at the right rate. But the company that we're using to facilitate and manage that has come back and credited us. And I think last month or the month before, the high school's bill was actually negative.
Right, exactly correct.
Yeah, so it's been tremendous. The high school's the only one of the school buildings that are currently on, on, on that arrangement. It's just the rest of the town buildings. Right now, we are, I actually just spoke with somebody an hour ago to look at off-taker power purchase agreement for the rest of the schools. However, it depends on what's available out there to off-take. So there's, there's no downside in having panels on our roof and then supplementing whatever the onsite panels generate with off-site power. That would be one way of achieving essentially, you know, a net zero, a fully renewable energy-powered building.
So what would be the difference in cost if we had, we were able to acquire renting solar panels in a solar farm versus installing it on the roof?
So I don't have numbers yet. I'm happy to get them when I speak with this company. But Matt, you might be able to speak more about the difference. I'm not sure in the marketplace, but generally, you're purchasing those at, at a certain rate that is at a certain level, depending on what the energy costs.
Is it cheaper or is it more expensive? I mean, I don't know. So, yeah, I'm not the one.
I think you're generally purchasing the power more expensive than generating it onsite, typically.
I don't have an answer, because I don't know the numbers from an off-site farm, but the construct is, the proposal that we have is, we're going to wire the modules behind your electric meter, and you'll consume that electricity directly at a flat price for the term. The off-site net meter credit value that you receive from the solar farm, the credit values will fluctuate. And your, your cost, depending how you structure it, follows that, or is fixed, or flat, and then your savings go up and down. We know that we do some, but we don't have an offer here for Winter.
Frank, is there a startup cost for this?
There's no cost out of pocket for the city to do this. The way the contracts work is that Select and the installer, all of that cost is buried into the 20-year contract, and our rate is fixed based on us paying back that installation cost over the 20 years.
Okay. And I notice there's no escalator clause, as opposed to, the last time we looked at that, there was an escalator clause.
Correct. And I would say every, every single proposal that I've ever seen has a, generally a 2% escalator cost. This opportunity was through Power Options, which is a large power purchasing consortium for many municipalities. They do Chelsea Schools. And this is a particular procurement arrangement that they have with Select that has a 0% escalator. So that's saving us a lot of money over the 20-year contract, putting a lot more money into our pocket than, than any other proposals that I've, I've seen.
And I understand you said KP reviewed the contract?
Yes.
How about the town manager?
Uh, yes. David Kressman had reviewed it. His main concern, given our proximity to the water and gale-force winds, was, are these panels going to blow off the roof? And we have verified through Select as well, and it is in the contract that they will do an engineering structural analysis of the roof and of the project to ensure that it meets all, all specifications to ensure that that, that's not the case.
Now, has Rich been involved in this? Rich, have you been involved in this at all?
Yeah, I was, I was more involved the first, first run-through. And, you know, a lot of this, a lot of the second time through was repetitive. My, my biggest concerns were the securing the warranty on the roof and also having the layout be conducive to us continue into service, you know, all the equipment on the roof, which it is. You know, the layout is, it gives us plenty of space around all our existing equipment, even if we had to stage another, you know, new RTU unit. It leaves us plenty of access to do all that. So, you know, from a, from a building, building side, maintenance side, I think it's, I think it works well. I'm happy to hear that we're using the existing roofing contractor. And then, you know, from the number side, you know, it sounds just as good to me as it does to all of you. So.
I guess the final question I would ask, if, if we go and approve this this evening, are we looking at other schools, like the other two schools?
So we certainly can. I know Select has looked at those schools. At this current juncture, those schools, we would need to re-roof before we could put solar panels on. So generally, because it's a 20-year contract, which is typically the length of, of what the roof lifespan is, they want, most, every single company I've ever spoken with wants the roof to be within five years of age. So we would have to re-roof some of the buildings, especially the Cummings School across the street, has sections that are ballasted with, with stone roof. We would have to remove those stones to be able to put solar panels up. So this is by far and away the best candidate in the town for solar. It was also designed from the get-go by the architect to be solar-ready. So we are certainly continuing to look at other avenues and other schools, but they're going to be longer-term projects because in terms of re-roofing them, there's going to be capital upfront that, that would have to make that happen before we could do solar.
Mr. Nidi, if I may, this is something that I'm definitely in support of. My own lifestyle, I've gone green the last few years. But as you know, we have a new town manager starting real shortly. I think for us to take a vote on this, I'd rather just run this by him and have his input on it, you know, opposed to taking a vote tonight. That's just my personal opinion. Mr. Perrin, please, tell your first piece.
I just worry about the technology changing so quickly. I mean, now there's shingles that, that are going to be, can supply heat. So when you reshingle your roof, you're putting on electronic, essentially electronic shingles that are going to, so I don't know what's going to happen with that, but I know that in 20 years, it's probably not going to be the same. So.
Of course. What I would say to that, though, is the, the cost of doing nothing, like, we're not, the technology is going to continue to advance, and maybe in the next 20 years, we might hit diminishing returns, right? And we won't, we'll just be eking out, like, small increments. So at a certain point, you have to pull the trigger and do it. I don't think, where the technology is advancing, yes, solar shingles wouldn't work on this building anyway. There's solar film that can be rolled out on a flat roof like this, but that technology is very, is really not being developed because there isn't a real market for it. The solar panels themselves generate far more than a solar film will. And I just think at this juncture, moving forward with a project like this puts more benefit than waiting five or 10 years for technology to advance, where we might get more bang for our buck. Sure.
So there's not an escalation clause for the kilowatt hours that we're going to use, but the change in law, so if I'm reading this correctly, there's a 10% increase if the change in law results in the solar company, the power company, getting an increase in their cost. So is that the, is it 10% to the life of this, or is it 10% for each year that it raises?
I'll, I'll let Matt speak to that, yeah.
Sorry. One time. So it's a, devotion can go up as 10% at any given time, but if, if the law changes, four years into the 20-year contract, and then it changes again, it won't be a 20% increase, it'll just be that 10%, the max you can hit.
We haven't done, we haven't done 45 on this per camera. We haven't had any change in law that's changed the rates.
Because I know that we're talking about a, a change in what they were going to allow. Last time around, I think we're under a gun to get it done. So I was just kind of concerned.
Right. That's the other reason I wanted to bring it forward. The way the smart, new smart program works, which is a terrible acronym, it's designed where there's a block system. So the, the value you get for your S-Rex, for your solar generated, decreases 4% for each subsequent block you fall into. So it's, I'm working with some other municipalities to try to address this with the Department of Energy Resources because it's detrimental to municipalities. It's much more in favor of corporations, since municipalities generally take longer to be able to get these things off the ground than, than many companies are able to. But that aside, that's why there's the urgency to get this done as early as possible, because the longer we wait, we run the risk of falling into later and later blocks where we're not, we'll, we'll lose value on our solar that we generate.
Just got a quick question regarding the installation itself and the timing for that, what it would look like. My concern is, you know, certainly I've gone through this, I've had meetings with Frank, I've talked to all of our maintenance people, the former town manager, current town manager, bridging with the newer town manager. My concern is the impact on students and when it would happen, how loud it would be.
And Mikhail expressed the same exact concern. So we've addressed this with him as well. I'll let Matt speak more to it, but we can certainly bring the panels and do work on weekends where it won't affect as many students. I think once the panels are on the roof, you won't even know they're there. But I'll, I'll let you guys, I'll let you speak more to that.
So the, the whole process is about six or seven months, but the onsite, the heavy work, we will do a load-in on weekends. We do a ton of schools. We do it all in the weekends. And then the mechanical installation of like the panels and the racking, that, that really takes two or three weeks. And then it's electricians pulling wire and terminating and connecting, and then waiting for the utility to come in and do an inspection and swap of the gear. So.
What's the noise level? Do you know?
Well, when they load, you know, it's noisy. And then when they're moving things around, occupants on the top floor are going to hear some on the roof, probably. But it is not.
And those are things that can be accomplished pretty, pretty much during the weekend, except for that six-week timeframe?
Nope. So we, we load in during the weekends. That's the noisiest. The next noisiest is the two or three weeks of moving panels around and connecting it to the racking system. We do that all week. And then the electricians are there, and that's just footprints and hand tools. So it's really the, the first weekend is loud, and then we clear out. The thing is, we work with, you know, typically the superintendent, your onsite, the principal and the facilities people to make sure as far as access, where people can park, what hours they can come in. Everybody goes through, goes through a chore check.
Of course, yeah, of course.
And then, but, I'll give you an example. We did two with Pittsburgh Public Schools, and they had MCAS, and we didn't come that week.
Take your life on your hands if you show up in that week.
Yeah, so kind of more important, right? But we try to, we're very accommodating and understanding environmental work and things, but it is a, there is a project going on. So, but we're not, you know, like, no radios and things like that. So it's just moving things around. It's really not the extended ones.
Thank you. Ms. Hanks.
I just have a quick question on the payment and the billing. I just want to point out that it says we have to pay the invoice within 30 days. Sometimes, it depends on when we get the invoice. As you know, we only have two school committees a month. Sometimes we just have one. And we do try to get everything, especially utility stuff, paid immediately. But I just want to, you know, what happens if it's over the 30 days? Are we charged interest or?
We go to Frank's house and take out.
That's for me and my pregnant. I'm just expecting money is to get broken in situations like this, but.
The mail is not great. You know, we get, because even with our electric bills now, the bill date, the bill of the, the date of the bill sometimes is two. Once, it was like three weeks before we even got it. It's just the mail is kind of crazy here. So I just want to.
So we'd ask you, when do you want to receive the bill and send it to you on those days? To start, so the idea is plan to work within your cycles. We, I don't know if we've never charged the late fee, but we don't charge late fees often.
I mean, it might not happen, but it has happened with the regular electric bills, you know, that you just miss that date. It ends up being late. We get charged interest and it just goes against my grain.
And then in the power purchase agreement contract, we negotiated that, I think, up to 60 or 90 days. Would you guys be open to extending it out a little bit further?
It probably wouldn't even be that long. It would, it's just in case over the holidays, sometimes we just have a meeting. If it just doesn't get for that meeting, I mean, I can reach out to whoever and let them know too, when the check would be cut.
Yeah, so our AR person is, I mean, I think that's planning and communication, I think, is, really helps. But we're not, and we're not making profit off of late fees. We're, you know, we're, we're in a 20-year relationship. Because Select, so we're a developer, installer, financer, and servicer. So we, we will manage the system ongoing. So we monitor inside tax, we do the management and service. We manage about 500 systems in Massachusetts. So it's.
Okay. I just don't want it to be a problem down the line, that's all. Thank you.
So the, the agreement that I looked at, reads like a novel. Is it an agreement, lease agreement, contract agreement? What is it?
Uh, so I believe we, it is a lease, but not a.
So power purchase agreement entities, so the lease allows us to have access to the equipment, to, to, to the site, to install and service the equipment with notice to whoever the, you know, access people are. So.
So it's a lease agreement. It's a 20-year lease agreement.
Yeah. So our, our, our legal counsel was pretty vehemently opposed to, what, ameasement?
Right.
Right, to ameasement and suggest leases in these cases. So.
I totally agree. Do we have the permits for the hookups to the electric company?
So, to your frame. So we start spending a lot of money after the contract's ended. And that includes, you know, all the engineering, all the utility engineering applications. When we get the utility applications back, and they say, give us condition, we'll be able to construct, that's when we will go submit for the building permit applications. That includes a structural affidavit stamped by a professional engineer in Massachusetts, a site plan, a work plan. I don't know if the building commissioner's here, but ultimately they, you know, get the application and tell us it's right. We pay the fee, and then we mobilize. So we don't have any permits yet.
So when you do pull a permit, and they give you a fee, have those fees in the past changed dramatically?
We pay. We don't get anything until it's on, and you guys pay.
But it's all part, but it's all part of you making money. So, in those fees, those fees, in my experience, because we've been through this, those fees have changed in Boston. They've come down and said, it's going to be 80 grand, and then it goes back at 180 grand. And everybody goes crazy. So what is your experience with that?
We cover the cost for the building permit.
So you haven't run into that problem?
Where some are really hot. Oh, yeah.
No, 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 no. Some have changed.
I don't know how much it would have changed. I mean, are you, is an order of magnitude change that's occurred here in Winter for building permits? Is that what?
No, talking about a hookup to the electric company.
Utility interconnection?
Yes.
If there's a, so the utility interconnection is on us. In the event, so there is some, in the agreement, it says that if we apply for the utility application, and what it really says is that we can stop the development if it becomes uneconomical and you guys won't agree to the rate. So here's what happens with the utility process specifically. We apply, they look at it, they determine if it's acceptable as-is. And that's everything from the building, to the conductors down the street, to the substation that it ultimately connects to, the transformer that it's going to be connected to. They decide, is there sufficient capacity to support the event that there's 100% excess generation blown back through their wires into their system? Right? So is it safe in the buildings? Is it safe outside the buildings? Is it safe in the substation? If there is saturation of distributed generation already in the circuit, or in, in study, being applied for, they'll ask us to fund an impact study. They'll hire an outside engineering company to do the analysis on that. And then they'll come back and tell us how much they're going to charge us to connect in the event that there are any system upgrades or enhancements required. If that is the case, then we'll come back to you guys with a revised proposed rate. If it's still acceptable, we'll go. If it's not, we won't.
So my, I, I would, I don't want to be redundant as far as, you know, having people look at this, because the first thing I would say is that Paul, look at it. But where KMP has, who looked at it already, I think we should have KMP in here to talk about this agreement. That's the biggest thing. And then just, we need to take a hard look at this. I mean, I've had bad experiences with solar panels.
So just like Tom, we've done 45 projects with cities and towns of this size in this area over the last three years, and it's been great. Now, we've also experienced challenges where projects become uneconomical through the utility.
And I'm not saying this one will be. All I'm saying is, my experience is that some of them are.
You have a right to discontinue if that's the case.
Right. Yeah, we built that in.
Yeah, that's built in. Now, how, how do we setting that rate?
Still won't have spent any money out of pocket on a project if that translates.
But how are we setting this rate? Is this written in stone, this kilowatt rate? Or is this based upon what your projections are under what Mr. Matucci said, like the actual cost? Is it, is there going to be a change in that? Or could there be a change? I, I have to apologize. I've read some of it, but I was trying to compare it to the prior contract.
The things that could change the rate would be if there was an impact study and there were extra costs associated with upgrading the national grid system. Your building is ready. There's nothing at the building that needs to be modified. Like your transformer can handle it, your distribution panel can handle it. The structure appears very ready to handle it. Right? The surface is in good condition. The pre-screen we did with National Grid indicated that there, so it's a 13 KV primary service drop to the transformer outside, and there's less than four megawatts of interconnected distributed generation on the circuit. We don't expect there's going to be any pushback from the utility in the application. You also use, somewhere in the neighborhood of a million and a half kilowatt hours a year, you're going to consume all the solar energy on site. So a study and system upgrade charges would change that.
So if, if that were to happen, do we have an ability to terminate on our end if it's not as economical, if it's not in our best interest after that? Do we have a right to terminate under this contract? I, I haven't seen it, so.
Well, if, if I may, I manage, I'm a vice president of development. I manage all the power purchasing events we do. I negotiate them all. And I'm on our finance committee. So we're really involved in this. If I come and give you an alternative, like an amendment to change the execution.
Exhibit A is the set price.
Choose to sign it or not. And then if you don't sign it, I can choose to.
Tobacco.
So you don't have an express.
So Exhibit A's, Exhibit A's cost for the next 20 years is set?
9.8 cents kilowatt hour. That's your cost.
So if your cost goes up and you need to come back to us and say, this is what we need to make this economically feasible for us, we have a right to say no, hold to this, but you can back out?
Yes, pre-construction.
Pre-construction.
Yep, yep. And then once we get out of construction, we're cut off to the races.
So after construction, that number can't change?
It can change by 10%.
Change in law clause?
10%, it'll change the law.
That says that if we incur extra costs or incentive income goes down, then we can present that first power options, your buyer, right? They're your procurement consortium. And they know energy really well. And then they would say to you, yeah, we, they'd say, all right, go ahead, ask for it. And then we would ask you for it. And the contract obliges you to do it. So I'll just call out something. You're at about 17 cents a kilowatt hour. It's about 14 cents all, excluding demand charges today. We're on your 10. If we went up to 11, you wouldn't save 4 cents kilowatt, you'd save 3 cents kilowatt hour.
Does this need to go to buildings? Hasn't already been.
We've been discussing this.
I think, I think what we really should do tonight is to, at our next meeting, have Corporate Page come in.
We've been discussing this.
And then first about the agreement.
Do you want to speak to what we're telling?
If I may, we've been discussing this. It's the, you know, the schools at first, the middle high school passed on the ballot. So it's been an ongoing process.
Like I said, we could give it to, give it a call.
So if I may, my, my only hesitation with having KP come in is, so the experience that we have had going through this process and some of the members that have been on here, the last time we tried to do this, the negotiation on this PPA stalled out. And a lot of the reason for that is, we've addressed like the main, main salient points in this contract. The rest of the negotiation with KP has, has literally been, and I am not exaggerating, word-for-word changes and rearranges of sentences that made up a lot of time and frankly, a lot of the town's money. That made up a lot of time and frankly, a lot of the town's money on consultation costs. And we had a point where we didn't feel like it was economically feasible to keep going with that level of minutia. So we have worked on just the main points of concern with, uh, with Dave Kressman, uh, with, um, McHale, uh, on, on the warranty and those areas. So, that's been, that's been the holdup, and that was a lot of the holdup the last time we tried to do this as well. And, um, I wanted to bring this here because I felt confident, we got as far as we could with the main, main points of this power purchase agreement. Anything else that we've been working on is, is, is nitpicking language, frankly.
I have to be honest with you, there's no such.
I understand.
There's no such thing as nitpicking language.
No, 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 I know, I know, but, I mean, I'm happy to provide it.
Is, is, let me ask you this, and this is my experience, we've had serious issues, especially, we had solar panels installed in the wintertime. And the first day they came in, they came in with buckets of rock salt to melt the ice on a rubber roof. Thank God we didn't let them out there, because they would've went right through it. So, it's things like that that concern me, also, um, as they're moving, there's gonna be a crew of guys up there, people, and they could be having screws and things and walking on top, putting holes in that roof. Which we've had experience with too, who fixes those, uh, when the roof leaks, uh, because it's gonna happen.
Do you want me to answer these questions? I'd be happy to, because you've seen everything, except rock salt, we haven't seen that yet.
What was that?
I haven't seen rock salt on the roof yet.
Oh, yeah.
Is that a town building, someone?
No, no, this isn't Boston. So, uh, no, you don't have to answer them, I totally, I, I am sure you can, but, these are, these are concerns I have, that's why, I think the agreement needs to be really looked at by us, we need to feel comfortable with the agreement. It's like to me, it reads like a bible, so I can't, it's too, it's long.
Right.
I don't know everything that's in it, I'd like to, like to have KMP come in, give us like a, a little, small condensed version of what they think about it. And then we need to talk more about the actual site, the actual work, when it's gonna be done, is it gonna be done, I don't know, we're even to vote tonight on this, which we're not going to. When would the project start, would we be doing this in the wintertime? That's a, that's, those are issues, because that's gonna prolong this thing, snow, ice, sleet, rain, storms. Uh, how are these things gonna be secured on the roof while storms are going, uh, they fly off the roof, uh, hit a car, hit a, some, whatever, as they're being put down. This is all stuff I've had experience with, so, I just think that we need to take a step back on it. Yes, this is, my committee could change, it's up to them, um, but my thing would be to hold off, and we need to really talk more about this.
And I understand your concerns, and I don't mean to diminish language, I understand, you know, but, um, this was the direction we got from town manager Kressman. He had reviewed all of the, uh, the reviews and, and everything that KP had done, and he, for the sake of, uh, of moving this forward, had directed us to, um, to tackle just the, the main points of, of this contract, so, uh, that's what we did, because we would still be going back and forth on a number of things right now. And, uh, we deemed that those, in the grand scheme of things, were, were small things compared to the main agreement. And, um, also at a certain point, again, having been through this one time before, what KP was arguing for was stuff that the other company was not agreeing to, would never agree to. And frankly, they won't agree to, and from my experience, no other solar installer will agree to. So, um, we got to a point where I, I didn't want us to bash our heads against a wall, and not be able to move the process forward at all. Um, and I, I know that this is a fantastic investment and opportunity for the town, especially for the school, to save money over the next twenty years, um, and the sooner the better. And I understand where you're coming from too, and my concern with, uh, continuing to draw this out is that it, it does get us farther and farther into those winter periods when, when construction will go on. And if we do do that, then, um, then if we fall the next year, we, you know, potentially miss out on the block, then it increases the opportunity for them to come back and have to change the, the pricing, because things have changed, I believe there's potentially new building codes that might come out, uh, starting in January one, which might substantially change the proposal. So, that's my only hesitation in continuing to push it further, although I, I do hear and understand your concerns.
If I may, as I said in theory, this is something that I'm completely in favor of, I just think it's completely reasonable, from my perspective, to have a conversation with a new town manager that we gave a very good contract to. That we have a conversation with them on such an important issue before we vote on.
Of course.
That's just my opinion on that.
I'm not advocating you guys for tonight, since there's clearly.
You said that earlier, that's why I was.
Right, but, I, obviously I would love it if you did, but I understand that.
I just feel much more comfortable having a conversation before we take a twenty year vote on an issue.
Of course.
From the date of signing the contract, when will the construction start, how far into it we take?
Two to three months, just depends on the utility speed, so the utility application, so let's say that you sign at the end of the month. So, probably get the utility application in about a week later, they've got thirty-five business days to respond, they've been moving faster, National Grid has, because their online portal has made things smoother for them, so they're moving back in a couple weeks. Then we, um, go to the building permit application, sometimes it's one week, sometimes it's three weeks. We do a construction planning meeting with the site folks, where we stage the order of equipment that arrives, so we, we hold a lot of equipment, so Select is based in Hopkinton, we've got a distribution facility there. We have regular monthly deliveries of the modules themselves, all the other equipment we just carry. So, if we sign, you know, at the end of the month, and we probably be on site November first, I'm guessing, right around that, November fifteenth maybe? Probably be, you know, heavy work done by first week of December, roughly, and then all the electric work next couple weeks.
So I'm just thinking the opposite, the further we go out, that two-month period kinda gets through the winter. If we're doing it in December, or pick as, you know, or late December, from this, into March, when it started where the weather wouldn't be as bad. Or even if we put it off further, we time it all for the summertime, so that there is no, you know, the kids aren't getting disrupted at all.
Talking about the beginning of the year.
You know what I mean, um, so knowing that timeframe, we might be able to time it a little bit better, so it's less of a headache.
At the end, the utility does take, especially at the end of the year, they're weeks and weeks out from coming to do an inspection, swapping the meter, and then giving you permission to operate, so that's that like long tail post-construction, it's like, you know.
I'm more worried about the noise, and, you know, the effects it has on the schools, if we can focus and have all that work done July and August, are we better off doing that and just holding off to that, you know, timeframe? Kinda set it up that way, um, just a thought.
But you're saying that if we do that, there's a risk that we're not gonna.
Yeah, the, um, National Grid, uh, National Grid by far and away has the largest pipeline of solar projects, um, compared to anybody else. So, um, at this point, they're even anticipating before, before we can even get our project in the hopper, we're already falling to block three or four, right? Like, that's how much of a backlog they have, uh, for the smart program, so, um, with, of course, some of those might not come to fruition, it might fall out, things like that, but, yes, the longer we, we do push it off, we do run the risk of falling later and later into the block.
It's just the way the D O E R design program, it's not like I'm saying hurry up and do it now, it's, the incentive declines and the rate goes up.
Okay.
Yes.
I just don't, you know, I wanna, we, we need to do, you know, give them an answer one way or the other.
Yeah, absolutely.
We wanna do it, you know, you know, in a reasonable timeframe, so my thing would be, I know you don't wanna spend any more money, and I don't wanna spend any money either, but we still, I, I really believe we need to see KMP, some rep from them with this agreement, first of all, and then secondly, if you wanted to have a buildings and grounds, and then we can make a recommendation for the full committee, or if you guys are comfortable.
Do we have anything from them, kind of outlining what their concerns are, or were with this agreement, that we can get, that might, yeah, that might save us some time.
Let me recap a couple things. So this is a procured template, right, it's the same contract for every customer. We've done Med for DPW, we're doing Chelsea Clark School, we're doing a whole bunch of projects around here, and we will modify.
For some reason, right.
KP, I'm on TV, um, does a very thorough job. They, um, extensively marked up the agreement. We told them, this is not workable, could you try to boil it down to the salient points? And they gave assistant town manager and Frank a list of things. We sat here for two and a half hours and worked through all those things, and made the salient and kinda meaty changes here. There's some things that, um, didn't make any sense to change, others that we just can't and won't change, because they have legal financing obligations. But I can tell you that, um, their input was heard loud and clear here, it did take three months, which is not to your benefit. But I think that it's prudent to have legal counsel to review, I don't know how Frank would characterize it, but I would say that they had extensive legal counsel from the law firm you're referring to, sir. Um, and it's been incorporated to what can be accepted. I do know the last time that, that the deal blew up, because they were so overbearing with their comments and recommendations, and that, uh, nobody in the market would do it. I've worked with them before, we've gotten contracts done before, they're fine people. The work that was conducted on this contract for the town of Winthrop was not tunable. And when the town management team reviewed it, they concurred. So there is a summary of those elements, I think Frank's got them available.
He can email those to us.
If you guys are gonna check, that might give you this, the view of what you're trying to accomplish.
Right.
Have three kids in public schools, right, you guys should be vetting this stuff, it seems participation was fantastic.
Brings me to the last question, I know you said National Grid a number of times, are the folks working on this gonna be trained and qualified, because I know that's really controversial right now? Doing the construction on the project?
Yeah, we've done, so Select is the largest solar company in Massachusetts in the commercial industrial space, we, we don't do homes, we do solar farms, but we do all the CNI stuff in the middle. And we have, you know, seventy-five full-time employees, we're NASTC certified, we're professional engineers, licensed electricians, masters, journeys, apprentice. Massachusetts contract supervisors, so we're able to pull permits, we have a safety officer.
Speaking of.
Who's compliant with not only an FAA permit that we have here, but also local state building codes, electric codes. So, um, we have a services team that is, not only manages our business, but other companies who are developers who might get a deal done and hire an electrician to install something. We come in and offer service contracts to maintain those, because the more productive it is, the more money we'll pull in, but also the more energy it produces, the less money you'll spend on electricity. So they make sure that our pro, the savings estimates, and on the investment side, the income estimates come true. So, I'd say we're very well qualified.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would suggest that, um, for the sake of trying to move this thing along, uh, the new town manager's down in today, uh, Mr. Kressman's gonna be around for at least thirty days. I would request that we get a written, um, report from the town manager's office, you know, whether he, um, endorses this or not, so that we can have a little more guidance. Unless you wanna have him come to a meeting, which I think will be something to that effect.
So we have a motion from President Beck here to send this to, uh, the new town manager to seek guidance, uh, on his opinion of position regarding this issue.
A written recommendation.
Written recommendation.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powell, any further discussion?
I'd like to see some Copman Page, um, comments.
I think that would be part of it.
Okay, okay, good, yeah, just an attachment maybe.
Yeah, that was my, my question, can you, can you please send that to the superintendent or?
Absolutely.
The school director.
And just to touch on what he said with that, um, added, the markups that they did make would actually have fundamentally changed the scope of work of the procurement, which would avoided the procurement, and we'd have to go back out to procurement again. So, um, you know, it would've been starting back in square one, so I can absolutely get that over to you guys for sure.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, President.
Thanks, Frank.
All right, up next, we have Laurie Galvin, the executive director of curriculum, instruction, and accountability.
Thanks so much.
Nice to meet everyone.
I had to ask through the chair, I had to ask Laurie just to come to tonight's meeting, so I could formally introduce her to you, many of you have had the opportunity to sit down and talk to Laurie. She certainly has had the opportunity to meet with all of our principals, has been a part of our Leadership Academy, which took place this, this summer in August, and has really hit the ground running. So, purpose of her coming tonight was to say hello, if folks had any thoughts or questions, and Laurie, do you have anything?
No, I'm just, um, really excited to be here, I, you know, really enjoyed this, these first two months, almost two months, um, it's a great administrative team, they really did a wonderful job at the leadership retreat, and their ability to work together was really impressive, and I've really enjoyed the time I've been able to spend with each of them, and I look forward to starting to meet all the teachers. My office is over in the comings, so I've started to see the few teachers that are strolling in this week, getting their classrooms ready, and, um, I'm just really looking forward to it. Any questions, Amy?
Yes, can you tell us just a little bit about your priorities and what your approach is gonna be in terms of addressing your curriculum?
Sure, um, I mean, my, my goal really to start is to set up standing times with all the principals, uh, Superintendent Howard and I have discussed, um, being able to do walkthroughs with the principals, be in classrooms, having conversations about what we're seeing, what's going on. Um, what, identifying what teachers need in order to deliver, uh, the instruction. And at the same time, trying to meet with the grade level groups of teachers at the early levels, and probably by discipline, um, in the high school, maybe even the middle school, to really get a handle on where there are gaps as far as vertical alignment between grades, um, and really create kind of a, a profile for me to understand all of it, what's going on, what seems to be lacking. There's some work that needs to be done around the new social studies standards, and, um, teachers are gonna need to spend some time this year doing a crosswalk through what they're doing now and what's expected next year, to make sure that we're not, there's no kids falling between the gaps. So if there's something this year that's part of the fifth grade curriculum, and next year it's going to be part of the fourth grade, we need to make sure that these fourth graders this year get it, because they won't be seeing it again, those kind of things. So, um, that's, you know, kind of a lot of the work that I'm gonna be doing with the principals is to set these kind of things up. You know, and I think that vertical alignment piece i- is a big piece that doesn't get paid enough attention to, as far as, um, really, you know, sixth grade teachers having real, you know, expectations for those fifth graders that are coming up, knowing where they came from, and vice versa, you know, the fifth grade, third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, really knowing what, where our students need to be when they enter sixth grade. We're educating kids for a world that doesn't exist yet, you know, the kids that are starting kindergarten this year, we have no idea what technology and, um, you know, it's fast paced, as, as things are moving, every year, it's, it's, you know, we never would've thought we'd be talking about flying cars, said this before, you know, um, and, you know, these are not things that kids would be, we talk about, we need to make sure that we're educating kids to be able to adapt to the world as fast as it's changing, so, these are, um, conversations that I get very excited about, and so I'm really looking forward to having conversations with the teachers, and see which, you know, what are the conversations that get them excited? And, you know, what, how do we start moving things in directions that will, um, you know, let us give these opportunities to the kids? Yes.
Laurie, in, in our meeting, I mean, the curriculum committee, you made a nice distinction between instructions, how it's taught in curriculum, it's what is taught. You might, um, could you expand on that a little bit, and what that means for you in terms of professional development for teachers? You might, um, could you expand on that a little bit and what that means for you in terms of professional development for teachers?
I mean, I think, you know, just like you said, the, the curriculum piece is what's being taught in the classrooms. And in Massachusetts, that's the standard. We, we're driven by Massachusetts state standards. How you teach it is that instructional piece that happens in the classroom. And I think that's where we need to make sure that we're supporting the teachers, making sure that they have the tools to be able to do that, that they have the time to be able to work together, to have those conversations, to share great teaching strategies. And we need to look at the data and make sure that, you know, our teachers are sharing. You know, our teachers that are really seeing, you know, great commitment from the students. Teachers who are producing great outcomes, you know, that they're sharing what they're doing with other teachers. That's what exemplary means in the teaching rubric, which was just changed again this year, this summer. You know, they have, it's always now, they, they changed the wording a little bit. You always need to be modeling for other teachers if you're gonna be characterized as, as an exemplary teacher. And I think that that's something that we need to make sure that we're, you know, focusing on. And make sure that parents, you know, see the great things that are happening in the schools around curriculum and instruction and that they get to know what's going on. There's so, we, we very often only get to hear about negative things that happen through the media, you know, so it's really about focusing on all the positives that are going on at different grade levels and, and the successes of the students. But I, I think it's, you know, it's a big move these days. Everything we do in professional development, everything that I go to, everything Superintendent Howard goes to, everything we send our teachers to. Those, those opportunities are, they're facilitated. They're facilitated and the teachers do the work in groups. And it's really what we have to move our classrooms to. Teacher as facilitator so that the students are the ones doing the work, that they're making meaning for themselves in the classroom every day and they're able to grow from it. And, and that's just about shifting, you know, your way of thinking in the classroom. So that's, that's something I'm, you know, hoping to do alongside the teachers.
Any questions for us?
Make them simple.
You've already been through a lot today.
All right.
It's okay. I'm good, thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, nice to meet you.
All right, moving on, we have the minutes for the July sixteenth meeting.
Motion through the minutes.
Motion by Mr. Matucci.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Swope, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstention.
Mr. Vecchia abstents and the ayes have it. Motion to approve the August sixth, twenty eighteen meeting. Moved, uh, motion by President Vecchia, seconded by Mr. Matucci, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Uh, we do have one payroll, we do have, sorry, one warrant today, SVW nineteen dash three. The amount of forty-seven thousand, one dollar and fifty-three cents.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, seconded by President Vecchia, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. We do not have any payroll warrants or budget transfers this evening. We have a number of buildings and grounds requests today, so I'm just, Mr. Perrin.
Like to make a motion, we take them all together?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Perrin, seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion? Do we like to say all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Moving on, Subcommittee reports. Curriculum Subcommittee meeting on August twentieth?
Yes, on August twentieth, we met at five oh two. Jennifer, Jimmy, Suzanne and Lisa and Laurie attended. Uh, we just opened the meeting because we had asked Lisa to ask Ron Harity some questions as part of his exit interview. He didn't get around getting those answered, so pretty good questions, but I, they'll come up again and perhaps another, another way. But we just wanted to get his opinion about things that, since he was leaving, what he thought. Well, we didn't get that. We spent our time with Laurie and as she, as you can see, she's very knowledgeable. She talked about her greatest achievement. Saw this as being able to really bring people together and to build community, because without that, it's very hard to get teachers engaged in, in what they're doing. So I think that is a great start. And it's also a great start because it involves building a community. If we're gonna get grants, we need to understand that we want to know where the money's going and who's, and what the results are. So we talked a lot about that importance of that communication. Of course, she plans to build support through teachers as well as parents. We asked how that, how we would do that. We talked a lot about what success looks like and how important it is, and everybody wants to know about it. So teachers wanna know about it, parents wanna know about it, kids wanna know about it. So although we didn't talk about necessarily this in the meeting, but I, I do think it's important that we know about those successes so we can talk to you all that are watching our program. Laurie had already ta- I mean, we'd already talked about professional development, Laurie just mentioned that, so I'll go into that. We talked about what parents are, Jen asked the question, what do you think parents wanna know and what can we, what would you like them to talk to you about? And she said she'd like to hear their concerns and what, what they thought and she'd like to meet with them. So I know between, between Superintendent Howard and Laurie, we'll, we'll be able to do even more of that this year. The assessment business is important, as we all know. It's not just standardized testing, but it's testing all through the year, figuring out how students are achieving, what they're achieving and what they're achieving. That's gonna be important as we walk through this year. We also discussed the reporting structure to the school committee. And we sort of agreed that we would perhaps have Laurie come once a month and give us a short report. And then we would follow up with anything that was of critical issues that was, that are specific in our, in our curriculum meetings. We will have a, one more curriculum meeting for sure on September twenty-fourth to follow up on all the loose ends from all the minutes that we've had in two thousand seventeen. We didn't meet in two thousand eighteen, so until today, or until last week. So I think that would, that will be important and then we'll decide how we wanna structure the rest of those meetings. Perhaps it's, it's enough to have her come and talk to us, but there may be very specific things we wanna follow up in curriculum. Didn't take any votes and we dismiss that. Thank you, Mr. German.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds?
So on Monday, August the thirteenth, we had a Buildings and Ground Subcommittee meeting. Myself and Suzanne were there. And we just quickly discussed the student transportation services. It read, the winter public schools will provide transportation for all students who live more than two miles or more from the school they attend. And we recommended that it was changed from all to K through six. It was a motion and it passed two to zero. Then we also had a Buildings and Ground Subcommittee tonight before this meeting at five thirty. Myself, Mr. Matucci and Suzanne were there. And we discussed the possibility of lowering the fees for the youth sports. But there was a motion made, but it wasn't seconded, so as of now, it will stay the same as it was in the fee structure as of last year. And that's it.
Policy Subcommittee?
Policy Subcommittee met this evening with Mr. Perrin and Mr. Matucci and myself present as voting members. And we took up the proposal to change the wording in the bus language from that we will transport all students to that we will change, that we will bus the K through six students. And I would like to make a motion that we approve that change tonight. And do we need to waive the reading?
I think we could waive, we could waive the first one.
I think it came out of committee, I don't think you need to.
We don't need to waive the?
I don't think we need to waive it, do we?
That looks fine.
Okay. Then I would make that motion that we make that language change from all to K through six.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Powell, seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Superintendent's report?
Thank you very much. Um, I will be brief, I have a lot of things, but I'm gonna try to stick to the topic. So strategic plan update, as many of you know, I'm working on a full committee, Leadership Team Committee, and myself are working on the strategic plan for the school district. Our Summer Leadership Academy, just to give you an update as, as to how far we've come. We met for a week during the summer, all of the principals, assistant principals, the education team leaders, any administrator in the system, the PPS director. Mr. Serino spent some time with me as well as Ms. Galvin. With efforts to take a look at my entry plan, look at the themes that were developed. We did some theory of action, we did lots of SWOT analyses. Many of the things which I'm gonna share with you in a September meeting, where I will be presenting to you the outcome of that week-long meeting and the year-long track I took of interviewing folks and spending a lot of time looking and listening and learning about what the, what winter public schools is about, what we do well, where we may need to improve and what the priorities of the teachers, students, parents and community members are. The end result of taking all that data and squeezing it down and sharing it with our leadership team resulted in us defining a new mission, a new vision, a new set of core values and the identification of three strategic objectives that the leadership team feels are the top three most important areas of focus for the school district moving forward. So I just wanted to give you sort of an update on where we were at with that. When that document is complete, I'll be asking the school committee to take a look at it and, and vote for a new strategic plan for the school district. And my hope is that we have a few meetings prior to that and that you're able to, to question the document itself. And I also would like to make sure that we fill you in on what went into putting that document together. Which was a combined collegial effort of students, teachers, community members and other key stakeholders. School committee had input at the beginning of the school year and I'll be asking for some more input before we finalize the plan. So that is the update on the strategic plan. What I could tell you came out of the core values, just as sort of a snapshot, is Viking pride is something that we ride on in a number of ways. Viking pride is the, the group that supports our co-curricular activities, academics, sports and other co-curricular activities by assisting us with funding. And the word pride is something that winter public schools, kids are very used to saying. Everybody has Viking pride and they know what it is. As our core values developed over the week during the summer and looking at all the data that we had, that was one word that we, we sort of couldn't break away from. And as teachers do and, and people who work in school districts do, you like to put the name to something to help you remember what it really means. So just as a snapshot, the P in pride means personal success, the R means respect, the I stands for integrity, the D stands for dedication and the E stands for excellence. And those are the core values that have been identified by the leadership team through all of the data that we have looked at and all of the discussions that we had ha- have had. What's interesting is it's very similar to, if you think about what Viking pride is and what our students strive for every day. You're not separating Viking pride by name from the pride that we would like to use in our core values. So that was just kind of a, a neat little thing that, that came up and we had some good laughs over how we can't seem to break away from the whole thing with the pride. So it, it worked out well. Few other topics just to touch on, to give you updates on. Facilities is something that I would like to focus on this year in terms of updates to the committee. I received today at my request, worked on by Mikhail and Rich, a five-page description of all the things that have, we have done in terms of facilities over the past year with some additional thoughts about where we're headed next year and what their planning is. And it was overwhelming when I read it, just looking at things like installation of boiler switches. And, and when I tell you five pages, it's five pages long. I'm gonna submit that to Buildings and Grounds for review. And it is as detailed as the replacement of five hundred filters in the RUT and AHU several times a year by the facilities department, helping fix the boys and girls toilets that were leaking into the wall at the middle of the high school, fixing not working lights in the auditorium handrails. It's extremely detailed, but I think it's worth reading. And I've read every single one of the things that have been listed. And this is not an exhaustive list, there is so much more. Mikhail told me he, he got, his hands got tired of doing the de- real detail. But he would also like to be able to present to the school committee. And I think moving forward, it's important. I think Ms. Galvin talked a little bit about celebrating the, the accomplishments of the school district as opposed to us always reacting to something that somebody has said that's of a concern to them and then we seem to come forward with all of our data to support why they're concerned. We had been on it from the beginning. I think moving forward, and the principals have agreed, that celebrating some of the accomplishments that we make prior to people having a concern promotes the school district. And the care of the facilities that I've seen in this district definitely has not been promoted in the past as it should. And our, our custodial staff and maintenance folks do a lot of work. And they do a lot of work at night and on the weekends when they're not technically on the clock. And that shows to me, because I get the text messages and the emails about the leaks and, you know, if there was a leak or something was damaged and, and they're right there. It, I think that looking at Miller Field and how the work of the custodial staff and the maintenance crew has now filtered over to the next project, which is our nine point eight million dollar athletic complex. Watching how our facilities people do their job day to day certainly has set the bar high for Miller Field. And our Miller Field, Field Administrator, Vasili Malios, it firsthand sees that. And the expectation of the custodial staff and the maintenance staff just spills right over to Miller Field. So I do think we need to celebrate that. I think that folks in the community need to hear all of the things that we're doing, how much work is involved in it, but how much attention we're paying to detail. Talking about fixing the handrails or the lights on coming down the auditorium walkway. One little light being out has not, is not sitting there for four or five weeks before it gets fixed. It's being, the attention being paid to that detail is important and I, and I believe the more we talk about it, the more people understand that it is something that we pay attention to every day. So I will be providing the list of improvements. And again, it's not exhaustive to Building and Grounds to take a peek at as we move forward. Staying on facilities, Ms. Miller Field. We have been utilizing, working with Parks and Recreation and the town to open the field for community time. That has been successful. We've had some rain periods and rain delays, but we have a nice collaborative relationship with Parks and Rec and they've been able to provide us with folks to, to oversee the facility and to be able to be there to manage it, to open the gate and close the gate. And also make sure we are walking appropriately on our track and, and following the rules that are outlined in our Miller Field manual. Other things that are taking place, high school sports schedule at Miller Field is forever changing. And we are pretty good now at communicating that with the town in case we have to alter the town field. Miller Field Committee has kept a website up and so that the town can go onto Facebook and take a peek to see if there have been any changes and that's been, that's been kept while with ticket proof. That the, our school, our high school students are building with Mr. Skane is beginning to take shape. So that's continuing. And the field house, our hopes are, I know that we have our plans for it. Monica in our procurement office here at Town Hall is working with Rich around pricing. So that is moving forward as well and seems to be on track. Focus, up to one more thing. Negotiations, we're still involved in negotiating of contracts. As you know, the teacher's contract was settled for one year. And the ESP, the Educational Support Personnel, settled a very similar contract a few nights ago that I will be presenting to you so that you are aware of that. And we need to continue to meet with our secretaries and the nurses as scheduled next for August twenty-eighth of two thousand and eighteen. And after that, we will have three other units that we will need to settle, which my hope is we have that completed by September. I attended the students' kindergarten ice cream social the other night, which was a lot of fun. It wasn't too hot, it was a nice breeze. We had almost all of our families show up, which was nice. We had Safe Streets there and that's a group that has been providing us with some consel- us with some consultation and advice around the change in our transportation and how that might impact our entrance and exit to the Gorman Fort Banks School. They actually worked with Ms. Pearson and myself to come up with some suggestions around a student arrival and dismissal plan. We have one in place. They liked it, and they did a little bit of tweaking of that and made some suggestions. Shout out to the DPW and Steve Calla, who had attended one of the meetings and jumped on some of the signage issues that they saw. They were very complimentary of the lines that we had drawn on the ground heading into the Gorman Fort Banks, and now it's a matter of us keeping people, holding people accountable to stay and follow the rules. So, the rules are, the student arrival and dismissal protocol has been sent to all of our parents. It's on the website, and it was at the kindergarten social for our new families that are now here. Part of the Safe Streets program is trying to encourage people to walk or bike to school. They put together for us a pin map so that if there are parents who are interested in carpooling or, I guess you call it bikepooling or student walkpooling, and they want to get together as a group and having some of their own conversations around adults supporting students walking from, say, one area to the next. I identified for them Old School Winthrop what the areas of town are, which would be the maze, the Highlands, the point, the beach. So, they got that lingo down, and they had our parents identifying where they may have a cluster of people that want to get together as a group and further have further conversation around other parents maybe picking a day to help walk a group of students to school. So, that's underway at the Gorman Fort Banks School. We are going to look at the parents' thought process around that at the Cummings School, if there are people that want to get together. The idea is to have the parents orchestrate it and for us to give them sort of the springboard to do that. The playground at the Cummings School, just a quick update on that. We have ordered all new swings, and after lots of conversation about how we were going to be funding those, we have found a funding source for that, which was moving some money from different maintenance areas to be able to cover some of that cost. We are waiting. Some quotes on the slides, the slides that are there, that same exact slide no longer exists, so the company came out to take a look at some type of a, I'm going to use the word retrofit, which is a bad word, but, because I don't think it's correct, but to retrofit something to fit the current structure that we have. And I will be presenting the town council with an update on the park itself. We had somebody else come out and look at the playground and look at the, look at the ground level of the playground, look at the old inspection that had been done, and give us a secondary opinion on what the cost would be to repair that park. And we owe the town council an update on that, so I'll work with the town manager once he settles in on presenting that in the event that we move forward at some point with a capital request for some assistance with funding, a redo of that playground. Our hope is that the playground is ready for the beginning of the school year and is safe for our students, and I'm confident that with the changeover in the swings and the padding that had been replaced prior to this, as well as fixing of the slides, we should be ready to go and then work into the next phase of eventually repairing the surface of that or redoing the surface and replacing the surface. Transportation, I gave an update, I believe, to one of the, to the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee, and we may have reviewed it at the last one, but just to give you an update on the total number of eligible riders, and those riders would be students in kindergarten through sixth grade who live beyond two miles from the front door of the, of the school or the address of the school to the address of their home. We use Google Walk to determine that, and at the last check, and I, we do check it daily because students enroll and we want to make sure we're staying on top of that. We had twenty-six students in total that lived beyond two miles from the school. And just for those of you who like data, that will be six kindergarten students, one, seven first graders, two second graders, two third graders, one fourth grader, six fifth graders, and two sixth graders. What we've done is reach out to, reached out to all of those parents to ask them if they were going to be taking advantage of the ride so that we could put together the routes. We've been in communication with almost everybody. Some folks have been on vacation, so they haven't returned phone calls. We've reached out by letter, phone call, and email. We hope that by the end of this week, we will have a response from everyone so that we're able to determine what the routes look like. We have about fifty percent response right now, and ironically, fifty percent of the people that we asked will take it, and the other fifty percent are preferring to drive their students to school. So, once that final number is determined, we can set the times, and we will be using a Winter Public Schools' van to transport the students, and we will work out the pickup and drop-off times based on the grade level of the students and the number of students that we can safely ride at once. And all of that information will be communicated with the individual parents of the students, and we have a meeting scheduled the last week of August to have the parents come in and actually sit down and have conversation about what that's going to look like, meet the bus driver, and fill out their paperwork and get a bus pass. And I believe, I believe that is it for me, and I know it was long for me. But, thank you.
Personnel?
So, personnel, that's me too. So, moving on to personnel, we have a new hire list packet in your folder, and this is the number of staff members that we have hired this year. It includes, our Director of Curriculum is on this list, as well as classroom teachers, ESPs, and any other staff that we have hired. All of these folks will be recognized on September fourth on our first day of school, and you can read through to see where each person is hired, been hired for. We have assumed a lot of the HR responsibilities in our own office, and that has been a learning curve that has been, I'm not going to call it fun, however, it certainly has brought us a little bit closer as a, as a department here in Town Hall and working closely together to make sure that all of our staff is onboarded properly. And I want to thank Stacy DeChara, who was the HR person, who's now fully HR for the town. I met with Stacy this week to talk about how I know now how difficult her job is because I've assumed a piece of that responsibility. And then all the women and folks working in our office right now, Beth Bailey, Diane, Patty, and Sue, each one of us have taken on some part of that process so that we can minimize one person being overwhelmed. So, that has been helpful. And the benefits continue to stay with Christine Dassau, who's been excellent in continuing to work with our staff to make sure that they get the proper benefits. We definitely messed that up in the first couple of weeks in terms of our communication, our mind communication with folks, and both Stacy and Christine were nice enough to bail us out and help us out with that. So, we're going to continue on with that process, and our principals have been also excellent in terms of their staff hiring. They were given sort of an amount of money that they could not exceed for every hire, and they have become great negotiators in terms of keeping track of who they've hired for less and who they want to hire for more, never going over the total amount. So, the attention to the budget in terms of our hiring has been monitored very closely.
The question was, it seemed like there were a number of people that, were there a number of people that left in August?
There were.
And is that typical of usually of Winthrop? Is the number about the same over years?
So, I think what's typical is that teachers come and go a lot. Winthrop is, and has been for years, a great springboard. You start work here, the amount of attention you have paid to you as an educator is far different than anything I have ever seen in the schools that I've either consulted in or have been a part of outside of Winthrop. It's a great place to start your career because you do receive so much support, and the teachers here are willing to give you that support daily. And where in most school districts, it may be larger, you have to reach out for your mentor and wait a few days to get the answer to the question here is not so much. This year, we did exit surveys with our staff. I actually spoke to almost everybody who left, and for the most part, folks were leaving for a different, either a different career choice or they were moving. We had a number of people move out of state, which was very interesting to me. I think over the past few years, the school district has settled contracts for teachers that have brought our teachers not, definitely not where they want to be, however, a lot closer to where we had been in the past. So, I think our ability to retain teachers in that manner is, has improved, and it has been more about teachers either changing careers or, I mean, we've had a few teachers decide that they just want to work in another school district or want a different classroom, different grade level that we don't have available. And then, so that was basically the reason for quite a bit of the turnover. We are almost fully hired as we move on to, in terms of retirements, we have had none. At this point, we've had some this year, but nothing new. And in terms of postings, of all the postings, long-term special ed teacher, a substitute, long-term substitute, a regular special ed teacher at Winter High School full-time, Cummings School Guidance Counselor, Winter High School. I'm coming back this way. Chairperson of the Evaluation Team, special ed chairperson at the Middle School, a reading specialist at the Cummings, a crisis intervention counselor at the Middle School, early elementary special ed ESP at the Gorman Fort Banks, science teacher at the Winthrop Middle School, ELL teacher at the Arthur T. Cummings. The majority of those positions had been posted once already. Some have been posted twice to draw more options for us. So, we are almost full in terms of the number of teaching positions. As somebody who's been a PPS director for years, there's always that August twenty-eighth knock at the door where somebody comes and says, "I'm sorry, but I have decided to do something else." What was done this year through the Mass Association of School Superintendents is all superintendents received an email from the director and requested that we actually contact each other and have conversation if, in fact, you are either losing somebody to another school district in August or you are hiring somebody in August. To reach out to that sending school district and have a conversation with the superintendent about reasonableness in terms of transition. I know that Chelsea Public Schools holds teachers to thirty days, and so that they have to give their school district thirty days if they resign after July fifteenth. And so, I've spoken with Mary Bork, who has helped me out tremendously as a mentor and somebody I can phone a friend in terms of a superintendent call, and I phoned her and said, "So, we have a situation?" And she was very grateful that I reached out to her prior to the person reaching out and saying, "I'm leaving Chelsea." And so, that gentleman's agreement that's across the state, hopefully other folks follow it. I think it's important to do because somebody's going to be left in a bad situation, and the idea is to bring somebody into your district in a good, in good light and to have them leave the place that they, you know, come to, leave the place that they were working at last in as good, if not better, condition than when they got there. And that's a message that I have given to each one of our staff. And we do not have any leaves of absence at this time.
All right. Thank you. On the new business, as Ms. Howard spoke about, the school handbooks and school improvement plan?
So, the school improvement plans, I have met with each principal and reviewed their school improvement plans. Next year's school improvement plans will be reflective of the school district's strategic plan, so where I think our path to developing the school, working on school improvements, plans will, now that we will have a strategic plan in place, we'll tie into that. Each one of the school improvement plans, I feel, are heartfelt, lots of work, lots of review of what's going on currently in the schools and approved by the, by the principals. So, I would, I would ask that you accept those plans. And the school handbooks, we have reviewed the school handbooks and made some adjustments to them. They would, I believe, last the year before I came, so two years ago, there was a pretty good revision of those handbooks. And it's always ongoing because the state is always asking you to make sure you include something else. So, I've checked each school handbook, and I feel as other principals have incorporated into those handbooks what needs to be done from a legal perspective as well as a reflection of their school. So, I would ask that, I believe you need to vote both of them. The high school is the primary vote. So, the high school handbook is the primary handbook that has to be accepted by the committee.
Motion to pull the handbook?
Second. Motion by Mr. Matucci.
Second by President Becken.
Yeah, just on some of those handbooks.
The names weren't changed.
On, so the final version.
Right, so like Nora was still at the Gorman Fort Banks and other principals. So, do we need to have those done before we accept them?
So, before they go to print, the final version will be, I think it's already been changed. I'm pretty sure it was already changed because we caught them. Is that what you have in your packet?
Yeah, in the packet, it still showed.
I'll double-check that just to make sure it gets completely changed, and I will mail, I will mail them to make sure that they change that. So, the high school handbook should have the correct names on it?
I believe so. The one that caught my eye was Nora not being in the Cummings and had Nora as the assistant at the Fort Banks.
We'll make sure that those get changed.
And check the date. Someone still said seventeen eighteen.
Okay, that's not even the most recent. Okay, we'll double-check that. I'll double-check it. So, the high school one is the one that require, does require.
Any further discussion?
I just, I, I think there's a lot of work that went into the school improvement plan. So, tell the principals and staff, I really appreciate reading them. I did have a few questions. Should I just send them on to you?
If you could, and I can have them answered by the principals for sure.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Moving on, any public comment? Public relations, Mr. Matucci.
Set, please.
Mr. Fabiano.
All set, thank you.
Mr. Perrin.
Say. Ms. Powell.
Yes, we are having, the, the high school will be having grade-nine parent orientation. I believe this is the first year that they've done that, and that's going to be on August twenty-seventh from six to seven P.M. to welcome our new parents and tell them how all the wonderful benefits of our high school. And the grade-nine student orientation will be the following day from ten to eleven-thirty, and that is actually hosted by the student council.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, seconded by President Feaver. The ayes have it. Thank you.